Good evening. This is the December 15, 2021 meeting of the Oyster River School Board. We will start tonight with the approval of the agenda. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
And a second from Dan. Any changes?
There won't be any non-meeting at the end then, right?
There will not be any non-meeting at the end. That is correct.
Okay.
All those in favor? Six in favor and the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. And that brings us to public comments. So we have got four folks signed up for a public comment tonight. We'll start with Bruce Fenton from Durham.
Thank you. I was doing some thinking on the way over and I was thinking about this library. And you have a book here called Animal Farm, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, by George Orwell. And there's a great line in there. It says, "Not all animals are..." What is it? "All animals are created equally. Some animals are more equal than others." And I got a great illustration of that right here. Here we have Representative Rosemary Rung, who's a big proponent of your unions and your... She's against the school vouchers. Here she is without a mask with Democrat Senator Cory Booker on Sunday. Here's a union leader, Colin Tierney, at a Democrat gala on Sunday. No mask. Here's Representative Maury Sullivan. No mask. Here's Representative Chris Pappas right down the street. No mask. Here's one of the leaders of the Party of Official Science, Jean Shaheen, who has publicly disclosed that she's had children come to this very school on Monday. No mask. It comes closer to home, though. Brian Sisnerow, on November 17, you... Somebody told me, I'm not sure, but they said you had no mask at the UNH football game. A football game they had thousands and thousands of people with no mask. And Dr. Morse, just this morning in your office, 11:15 a.m., a person came into the office with no mask and witnessed one of your employees in the second office, in the office with no mask. I could go on. Would you like me to go on? Oh, I did have a... Just a point of order clarification for the chair. A couple of meetings ago, you informed me that if I removed my mask, I'd be removed by force by armed men. Is that order still in effect?
Public comment is not a time for dialogue with the board.
But I'm asking for a point of order. I'm just trying to understand your rules. They seem very confusing to me.
To make a point of order, you actually have to be a member of the board.
Well, I'm trying to find out the rules. I'm also wondering if I had a COVID test in hand and I removed my mask, can I do the same thing that Dr. Morse's employee can do or that Jean Shaheen can do? Or will you have me removed by force? Maybe not all animals are equal. You might want to read that book and wonder what character you are. You're willing to have me removed by force for doing something that your own board members would do? You're not afraid of catching COVID from me? So what is it then? What is it then? What are you so afraid of? Presumably, that's the same for my son.
Mr. Fenton, your three minutes are up.
You'd remove him by force as well. Maybe a taser.
Mr. Fenton, your three minutes are up.
Read some books. Thank you.
All right. Darren Keller, Lee.
Hello. How are you doing? I have a prepared statement. I don't know if it'll be under three minutes, but I'll try. My name's Darren Keller. I'm resident of Lee. I'm here to provide input about the manner in which the DIJ position was placed into the budget. Unfortunately, I have to spend some of my 180 seconds to preface my input to avoid being falsely labeled in these hyper-partisan times. My input is not left or right, but based on life experience. I attended high school in a very rural community in Virginia, about one hour outside of Washington. It certainly was no role model for diversity. I joined the Navy, serving in submarines during an era that women were not eligible to serve onboard a submarine. Then into my undergrad at UNH and eventually attending an executive MBA program at the National University of Singapore. I'm married to a first-generation immigrant. I have two mixed-race children in the high school. I was also an immigrant. I lived in Southeast Asia for nearly 12 years, including long stints in China and Singapore. So how does a guy like me with Archie Bunker-type role models, growing up and end up traveling the world, multinational roles, married to an immigrant? How does that happen? I'll articulate in a bit. I just hope this snippet of life experience gives me some credibility to listen to what I have to say rather than waiting out my 180 seconds. I have an understanding of what does and, most importantly, what does not resonate with those of you who you would want to influence to be more culturally aware. My culture awareness came from having a high school Spanish teacher who taught more than language but also cultural norms. She provided guest speakers with food and meet-and-greets, humanizing other cultures, and cannot come from politicized organizations or an administrator with an agenda. My culture awareness comes from visiting museums, class trips to other countries, understandably difficult in this current times. You know, a seven-day trip to a foreign country does far more to immerse someone in cultural learning than any coordinator position could ever do. Meaningful immersion into language and other cultures is how I personally was fortunate not to be trapped by bigotry or being culturally illiterate. I implore the board to reconsider your position on the DIJ role and instead invest in world language or other rigorous SAT prep rather than going down the path of political influence. All parents and taxpayers should be concerned that the DIJ position was not properly articulated in scope. It lacked job description, gave no indication as to how the role would be implemented into the curriculum. Frankly, the board lacked rigor in what would normally occur when creating a brand-new role. Regardless of how much time and effort...
Mr. Keller, your time is up.
Okay. Well, I think it's important what they say. I don't know if other members would be willing to listen to what I have to say, but...
Could you give us a copy of that in writing and I'll make sure the board gets it?
No, I want to speak it because I want it to be reported.
We have another public comment time at the end of the meeting if you'd like to stay. Thank you. Allison Jumper?
My name is Allison Jumper. I live in Durham. I have three kids. One is a fourth grader at Moheramet. I fully agree that a DEIJ director would be a valuable addition to our school district. I am asking tonight that the board, administration, and the DEIJ committee not leave out accessibility for people with disabilities from the role of a DEIJ director. YW Boston, an organization that is self-described as dedicated to eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all, published an article in September titled "Don't Leave Disability Equity Behind When Building Your DEI Initiatives." That is on their website, ywBoston.org. The article describes the social model of disability. I would encourage you to look up the definition of this model at a later time, as I only have three minutes. The article continues, "The social model of disability holds accountable those in charge of our physical and social environments to make necessary accessible changes. This model is important when thinking about disability equity, which helps proactively accommodate the needs of people with disabilities. When thinking about disability equity, it's also important to think about how the social identity of disability can intersect with other forms of identity such as race and gender. Like a house of cards, these social identities can stack on top of one another, quote, 'creating overlapping and interdependent systems of discrimination or disadvantage,' quote, as taken from the Oxford Dictionary. As we all know, identities can be intersecting. A person with a disability may also be a person of color and a person who is LGBTQ, for example. At the last board meeting, you proposed to fund this new position with money that has been previously allocated for children with disabilities. Please do not take $50,000 from special education to fund this position. What if a child with a disability needs a contracted service provider to achieve equal access to his or her education? I am concerned that a child in that situation could actually be denied his access or have delayed access because funding has been redirected to a DEIJ position. This loss of funding will result in children receiving fewer services. Under the ADA, equal access is a civil right for people with disabilities, and to deny or delay equal access indirectly by funding a DEIJ director with money allocated for children with disabilities defeats the purpose of trying to promote equity and justice in this district. Please do fund a DEIJ position, but please fund it in such a way that it does not take money from marginalized populations. Thank you for listening, for your time, and for all of your hard work."
Thank you. And Kristin Forcellius from Lee.
Hi. Good evening. Kristin Forcellius from Lee, my mom of a graduate and senior. I just wanted to quickly say I support the DEIJ position and really because I do a lot of work around equity issues and I am finding that I'm always coming up with more questions for myself and I'm always realizing there's more learning to do. And so I can't even imagine how teachers and staff and other parents are managing the HB2 law that was put in place by Governor Sununu and this new bill that's being proposed, 1255, the Teacher Loyalty Bill. I just think we need a professional in our district who can help our students and our faculty, our board, our parents navigate what these laws are and how we're going to learn, how our students are going to learn within them. So I just wanted to say I support the position and I'm hoping that it is going to be passed as full-time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Morse, do we have any email public comment tonight?
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Anita Matha writes from 15 Oyster River Road in Durham. I applaud the school board for voting to hire a full-time DEIJ director. This is my hope that part of the role of the new DEIJ director will be helped, will help facilitate the implementation of a world language program at Massway in Moheramet. Thank you, Anita Matha.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. All right. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from December 1.
Move to approve the minutes from December 1?
We have a motion from Tom.
I'll second.
Second from Denise. Any corrections or additions? Denise?
Yes. Under the public hearing, I did not say that the changes will bring the policy into compliance. It should be into alignment. We've always been in compliance with the right to know. We were more than compliant, so it's just more in alliance with... Alignment, excuse me, alignment with what the actual law says.
Thank you. Others? All right. With that correction, all those in favor of approval of the December 1 minutes, six in favor and the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
Jay Rashad, principal. I just want to give you a quick update. I've had community members as well as parents start to reach out about the possibility of open houses in the new school. I do want to let you know I'm actively working with staff and others to schedule those. The dates for open houses for parents will be scheduled at some point in March, and I'll work with others to make sure, you know, everything will work for everyone. But we're actively... So we're going to open up the school to our parents and also have an open house for our community members. And we're grateful for what they've provided to our staff and, of course, our entire community and students. So that is definitely going to be coming. So I plan to share those dates with you after the new year. So just be looking forward to that. And another big thing that I'll be working with alumni, staff, alumni staff as well is to make sure we have opportunities for community members and previous staff to come in and walk around the old RMS because that's going to be taken down, you know, shortly after we move into the new school. And I recognize the importance of community members and alumni to be able to walk the halls one last time. And the countdown is this. I want to keep everybody happy. It's 75 calendar days and 35 school days. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Rebecca Nowey, principal of Oyster River High School. First, I want to tell you that a few of us in educational leadership had the chance to visit with sociology class today and talk about how students are looking at education and some proposals that they had and ideas that they had. So it was just really nice to hear their ideas and their opinions and how forward-thinking that they were. So that was enjoyable. Another thing, today was the day that teachers turned in any proposals they had for new classes. So Mr. Webb, the director of counseling, and I will be going through those over the next week and looking at different classes that teachers are interested in adding to the program of studies. Also, we had our coding and COCO event last Wednesday, which was hugely successful. I'm sure that Olivia might talk a little bit more about that. She was a big part of that, but it was a really good experience. The elementary schools and the high schools were working together over teams. We had robots all over the first floor of the building. So it was just a really good job by our entire tech team in the district. And then last, our absolutely amazing concert Monday night that we just had, that was virtual. And so I did not know there would be singing also, so that was a nice surprise for me. I thought it was just going to be instrumental, but I was just extremely impressed. Everything I have heard about our orchestra and our musical... Our musicians in the district was absolutely true. So I'm just very, very proud of them and wanted to commend them for the great job that they did. So, any questions?
I had a question about the education policy presentation.
Yes.
Which is fantastic. I'm wondering if there were any that stuck out to you? What was one that intrigued you and thought could be implementable someday?
So, well, they really were asking questions about like why we do some of the things that we do. So some of the tardy policies that we have or procedures. And then really, the big one was Bobcat Days. They wanted to talk about Bobcat Days, how that got started, how it runs, their ideas about what we could do at that time. So in the two groups that I got to talk to, because we were split into smaller groups to allow for social distancing, those were some of the topics that came up. The Bobcat Day was the one between both of them that they were very interested in talking about. Thank you.
Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the board. Denise?
I also was able to join part of the concert. I missed the first part because we had DEIJ committee, but caught the second, the orchestra. It was very nice, although I look forward to a time that we can actually be in person again, hopefully next year in our new recital hall.
HB 1255 was mentioned in the public comments, and I've handed out to all the board members a copy of the proposal. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's... I think it's such a damaging and incredibly unclear drafting that it's, I think, will just be very unclear what is prohibited. I'll just read one prohibition in there that I've read many times that I have no idea what this means. "No teacher shall advocate any doctrine or theory promoting a negative account or representation of the founding and history of the United States of America in New Hampshire public schools, which does not include the worldwide context of now outdated and discouraged practices." Such prohibition includes, but it's not limited to teaching, that the United States was founded on racism. I think that what would be a worldwide context of now undated, outdated, and discouraged practices, that you're required to do that, it just makes no sense at all. And so I think that as a board, as this moves, if it does move to a hearing, we should, you know, I guess it would be decision of the board, but whether we should consider being present to testify against this. So just to keep an eye... I don't think anything's going to happen until the new year, but I think we should keep an eye on this because this... It's so unclear, but what is it prohibited? And when you have an unclear law, then you think, okay, I'm going to cross... Where's the line? If I don't know where the line is, how do I know that I'm not crossing it with anything I do? And how could any teacher provide? And the world's a big place, right? A worldwide context of discouraged practices? How could that possibly be an expectation for teaching? So I think we just keep an eye on it.
I just want to thank the staff, parents, students, and the district for your persistence and diligence and striving to keep our schools open and active through this time. We are at the peak of the pandemic in New Hampshire thus far. Our hospitals are literally overflowing. People who are being denied care because the hospitals don't have the capacity anymore. We have over 2,000 students in our four buildings every school day and 400 faculty and staff. And if you look at our track record of keeping school open, keeping classes in session, in these circumstances, it's really remarkable, and I just think that deserves recognition. Thank you. Others? All right. Moving on to district reports, and we're going to take the... Dr. Morse?
Yes, if you don't mind, Michael. So I asked Michael to put my report before Suzanne's tonight because hers is really the heart of the agenda this evening on testing. I want to share with the school board and the community at large that Catherine Implored was selected as Special Educator Director statewide. It's not done lightly. She actually had to compete with a Keene, right, Catherine? Is it Keene? What town?
Nashua.
Nashua. Thank you. So Catherine, along with the director in Nashua, were CO winners this year. The caliber of choices they had before them was very, very high. They couldn't just choose one or the other, so they broke their own pattern and chose both. It's an incredible honor. When I first came in as superintendent, you know, the record-keeping was really substandard. We were getting zinged by the state constantly. And I would say within three school years, Catherine did a tremendous amount of training with her staff and built up their capacity. And by the fourth year she was here, we had zero demerits from the state in terms of their assessment of our program, and that's been the case for the last six years. She's an incredible leader and was nominated by her own staff, which says a lot about who she is as an administrator and who she is as a colleague. And the school board's participation in this was incredibly impactful. And the parents as well, the number of parents who spoke on Catherine's behalf. The person who was presenting the award to Catherine, she said it brought her to tears to hear the powerful testimony from parents in support of the district's program. And, you know, I think this is true. One of the reputations the district has is having, you know, a top-notch special education program. And, you know, my philosophy is excellent teachers deserve excellent leadership, and Catherine represents excellent leadership. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. Congratulations, Catherine.
And then just before... And maybe Catherine should go before you, Suzanne, because hers is just a report on the data. But one of the pieces that Suzanne and Catherine organized was the vaccination of our youngest students. So on Saturday, it was the second vaccination. It was booster shots. And we had nearly 900 students show up for the second vaccination, but it was mixed with these booster shots and so forth. My guesstimate is, and because the district has been supportive of public health agencies, over 4,000 vaccinations have occurred on-site. And so I think that's a credit to both Catherine and Suzanne and Todd. And we have to remember they started with Todd. So great effort and worthy of great support from all of us.
Yeah. So to piggyback on that for a second, Suzanne was able to get out a memo to the community that we are trying to do the booster for 16, 17, and 18-year-olds on Monday. We're waiting on state orders, which we hadn't received yet. Maine and Massachusetts are... Have started their boosters with 16, 17, 18-year-olds. We're still waiting on our state orders so that the public health network can arrange those. But when we were at the clinic this Saturday, I approached Chris Lemelin. I just wanted to take a second and give him a ton of kudos. He's a captain with McGregor EMS. And I said, "Hey, do you think we could, you know, try and offer this?" Because Suzanne and I both had received several questions about offering boosters to 16, 17, and 18-year-olds. He's like, "Let me think about it." I was like, "No, really. Like, could we do it right before, you know, break so that we could get people boosted who wanted to be boosted before break? That would really help." So he immediately went and found Shannon, who is another individual who's been working with us. She's at a Portsmouth hospital. And they said, "Sure, we'll make it happen. We just need the order." So Suzanne was able to get that memo out to the community. We're just waiting on the state orders and the appropriate paperwork. So during the school day that we can offer that, it'll be run by McGregor EMS again. We'll have our school nurse support the clinic that day, and our consents will be digital so that parents do not have to come in that day for the 16, 17, or 18-year-old. So that's pretty awesome. The other thing is just sort of the metrics. You guys have the metrics. You see them. They look horrible. Michael did a little intro in terms of where we stand as a state. Certainly, we are, you know, in the substantial range, 1,182.7 new cases per 100,000 over the past 14 days. Anything above 100 is substantial. When you come to percent positive, we're at 12.3. The moderate range for transmission rate, 1.1. Remember, this figure tends to be a little bit more shifty depending on when the rates come in because some of the cases that come in are not always reported when they happened. It's when the results come in. So for example, there's a number of cases that are supposed to be updated in the next day or two that are from Monday. I believe it's something like 800 cases. It's big. ICU capacity is definitely stretched in conversations with our local healthcare providers. We certainly have doubled-up ICU rooms. We have people in the hallways and people trying to get other care that aren't able to access it. It's really a tough time for New Hampshire. Our staffing capacity continues to be insufficient. We have made some inroads with hiring of par educators. That's happening slowly and making a huge difference. It's really coming down to just the subbing and when we have to potentially quarantine more than, you know, one staff member at a time where our subs are impacted. And then our local contact tracing ability continues to be, you know, insufficient. We're able to do it. It's taking time, but it's working okay. It's just taking, you know, more time. I, you know, appreciate that parents that... Who have been patient and flexible and supportive of our school nurses. We still continue to have some days where they take a lot of heat for the decisions that we have to make, and they continue to be very professional and supportive and provide as much resource as they can to the family. As you know, these metrics come right from Dr. Megan Harvey, and of course, she continues to recommend vaccinations. Get a booster if you can. Wear a well-fitting, high-quality mask, and use rapid tests before visiting inside without masks. And as you know, the district continues to offer surveillance testing through UNH SASS program. We had another day today, and we will offer rapid and/or PCRs based on healthcare decision as needed. So we actually... Two of our rapid kits. So when we get a rapid kit from the state, we have to do a quality control check on them, and there's 40 kits in a box, 40 test kits, and two boxes didn't pass quality control. So we're out. So I'm driving to Concord tomorrow to pick up new boxes. So we are really testing quite a bit to try and keep kids in school. That's our goal, so that we can test them and keep them in school.
In staff?
In staff, absolutely. In staff to... So if staff members have some symptoms in the morning, we can test them at 7:30, and they're good to go and get them in the classroom. That's where we're at.
Questions for Catherine?
All right. Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Suzanne?
Good evening. I'm not sure if I need to do this or if Alexander... Oh, thank you. So this evening, I'm just going to talk a little bit about assessing and monitoring student growth.
Not sure if I need to do this or if Alexander... Oh, thank you. So this evening, I'm just going to talk a little bit about assessing and monitoring student growth and learning. We are going to, this is going to be in multiple parts. So today, this evening, we're going to talk specifically about quantitative data that we're collecting and then focused on academics. And then what we will do in the next session is we will talk about the SEL and MTSSB and how we collect data around SEL and then, and what we look at. And then we will, in the third part of this, in February, we will talk a little bit about what the interventions look like for students. So I will touch on interventions a little bit, and I will touch on social-emotional learning a little bit, but I'm not going to focus heavily on that. We will get to that as, as we progress through the next few months. Today, this evening, really what I want to focus on is the academic piece and talk a little bit about some of the assessments that we've done so far this year and how it compares to other years. So I will, as I continue through, do you want me to just continue all the way through and then ask questions at the end? Yes? Okay. Fabulous. So a few things to remember. I think it's important that we remember that we lost instructional time, as did all students nationally in 2020, 2021. And that instructional time definitely impacted students. Our standardized testing that we administered last year, while the test was standard, the conditions were not necessarily standard. We had kids taking the STAR assessment under tents in, you know, in different spaces. Some students came into the building to take their assessments and then left, and they were, they had continued their learning at home as a remote student. So there was some variation to that, and I think that's important to remember. This fall, when we administered the test, we were transitioning our kids back into full-day, everybody back in full-day experience with each other. So I think that's also important, especially when we're looking at the elementary, just to remember that, that that was part of the transition, and we were working on really thinking about students as the whole student, SEL, as well as academics, and focusing on that. And also, obviously, as we all know, we're still grappling with some of these issues related to the pandemic. The quantitative data that we have really is, we need to celebrate. I think it's quite amazing. We, it's one of the things that I think is really a testament to our teachers and to our families and the district and the focus on education and how important it is. And so I commend everybody as we moved, as we moved through this pandemic with the work that we've done. Even with this data, we, I'm going to dive into it a little bit more deeply, because while we use the STAR assessment primarily as a universal test, and we use this as, we use it as a universal test for our students, you really can pull the data apart to give more information about what the areas are that we need to be able to focus on, because quantitative data really helps us to understand our students, and it informs our instructional practices as well as our interventions. So instructional practices in tier one, the things that happen in the classroom with the teacher, that is one, one tier of support that we can gather data from with these, with the STAR assessment and other assessments. And then we also can identify tier two and tier three supports for kids. And tier three supports really are those interventions that we need to be able to give our students. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about all of those things as they relate to academics specifically. So just the types of assessments we give and why we give them. So we have, as a district, we use the STAR assessment, which is a Renaissance product, and we administer the STAR assessment. We've been doing it for years. And STAR, the STAR assessment is nationally normed. And so the only thing that, while it's nationally normed, it's similar to something like the SAT, which is nationally normed. We, unlike the SAT, we adjust the benchmark. We, Oyster River has a benchmark. So each district can kind of figure out where their benchmark is for proficient, but the actual test itself is nationally normed. PSAT and SAT is nationally normed, and the benchmarks are chosen by college board. So, so we don't really use, we use the PSAT and the SAT a little bit differently than we use the STAR, though. And the SAT is, is also the state assessment that is given. So, and we do have SAS testing, which is another state test, not to be confused with the SAS screening, testing, but we also have a state assessment that's given. We don't use the state assessment to monitor student growth. The state assessment, state assessment is given for a variety of different reasons, and it has changed over the years. It hasn't stayed consistent, and so it makes it really challenging to use that to monitor student growth. And so we, we focus really on the STAR assessment, the PSAT, and the SAT. We focus on Akadience testing, which I will talk, we'll talk about later. We're not going to spend a lot of time talking about Akadience testing. That's used, was formerly known as DIBELS, which you may have heard that before. And the Akadience testing is primarily used for kindergarten and first grade, and then second grade all the way to ninth grade is the STAR testing. And then we use the PSATs and the SATs in the high school. So that's how the progression moves for us, for, for testing students. And this year, we have made a little, a few small adjustments with that, just because we're coming out of the pandemic and we want some more data. So we are making some adjustments with that. But that's how this, how, those are the points of data that we use and the types of assessments that we use. We also use other things for MTSS. So teachers are always gathering data and assessing students, and so they are, they are some of our best resources. And so they are part of the, always part of that conversation when we're talking about student assessments and, and student growth. And those assessments happen in the classroom on a regular basis, but they're both formative assessments and summative assessments that are given. And so those are, those are continually occurring. I'm going to talk a little bit more about progress monitoring and what that is and what that looks like, and we'll talk more about that during interventions as well. And, and I'll get into some of the, some of the specifics around that in a little bit. So today, we're just really going to look at the STAR assessment, which is our internal assessment that we give to progress, to monitor the progress of student learning and to really get a picture of where our students are at in a nationally normed assessment. So for Mass Way, you can see where we are. The yellow is this fall, and the blue is the fall from previous years. So in this, in, for, for all of Mass Way, the percent proficient and percent, and we're going to talk a little more about what that means, but is 77% proficient from the fall, for the fall of this year, for math. So again, it's nationally normed, and I'll talk a little bit more about what, what proficient is in a few minutes. But this really shows us that our kids are progressing, that they're, that they're, that they are, that they are moving along and that they're not, you know, compared nationally, they're not losing a lot of, they haven't lost a lot of ground in their learning. Same thing with the reading. Mo haremit math, it's the same, we're at the same point. And mo haremit reading. So one of the things that we do do with the data is we say, okay, this is, you know, we see that 75% of mo haremit students are reading at proficient or above proficient or are proficient. So what does that mean? So then we start diving a little bit deeper into the data and start to pull information out, because we do know that we have, we have students that are struggling learners. So even though it may say 75% of students are proficient, there's, there's a variation within that. So we pull it apart by grade, and then you pull it apart even more in an MTSS team of teachers that would meet at the grade level, and, and they would meet and have conversations about kids and where kids are at. So this, this is the next sort of step, which would be to look at each grade level. At or above proficient, our benchmark for Oyster River is the 41st percentile and above. That, that is the at or above proficient. So as you can see, when we look at the second, the third, and the fourth grade, we are, our focus is really going to be on the second grade. We have a number of students, a larger percentage of students, that we, when we look at the percentile, we're saying, okay, there, there are more students here that need interventions, could possibly need interventions. We need to dive a little bit more deeply into that, and what does that mean number-wise? So those are percentages, but what does it really mean number-wise? You're talking around for the second grade, you're talking around 30, about 37 students that are below proficient in around, in reading, and around 25 students in math. So that's approximately what we're looking at. So, so the MTSS team would look at that information, talk to the teachers, and then, and then for second grade, one of the things that Misty and David, they've done is they've then said, okay, we need to look at doing some more testing for these kids and diving a little bit more deeper into this. And so a lot of times, they will administer the Akadience test, which will then give more information to be able to identify very specifically what areas of reading and what areas of math. Is it fluency? Is it computational? Is it, you know, what are those areas that we need to really dive a little bit more into and give interventions to kids for?
So, I just want to make sure I understand proficiency. So proficiency is not directly tied to standards?
So the proficiency is directly tied to the percent of students that earn, that are at, the students that are at a certain percent, they're earning a certain percent. So the one thing with the STAR test is that it is a test that, that adjusts. So the way that they score it is it will adjust. So as your answer, as kids answer questions, the questions correctly, the questions get more difficult, and it's a really short test. So it's like typically only like 20-minute test or so. And so the questions will get more difficult. So when they, when, when the score is actually determined, it's determined by the difficulty of the question, as well as how many they got correct. And so that percentage would be the percentage... So to answer your question, if I scored like a, if my questions were more difficult and I was getting them correct, and I scored a lot of, and I was doing more questions, the number of questions was larger and more difficult, then my score, that's how it would be adjusted? I don't know. Am I answering your question?
So let me try this. If I look at the fourth grade row...
Yeah.
We've got reading 83%. So I think that means, based on what I see here, that 83% of our fourth graders are in the top 60% nationwide.
Yes.
What that doesn't tell me is what proportion of our fourth graders are where they should be according to our standards.
Another way of saying that is if the 100 or 100,000 people, kids across the country all went down, but they stayed in the same order, so the percentiles would be the same.
Yes, because it's nationally normed.
We would, exactly. So it, we could have fallen absolutely, even as we stayed the same relatively. And the gains that we might be seeing are relative gains, but not absolute gains. Our children could have still lost ground, just not as much ground as the rest of the country.
Because it's nationally normed. Yeah, and, and I, and to know what that is, we would need to, we would need to go into the test more to be able to know exactly what that means, exactly what that is, to know how much of that, how much of that shifted.
Right. So that's why the MTSS team locally goes in and digests this data to answer your question specifically, Michael. That team is now looking at the data from a perspective of Oyster River, once we have the data. So whether a child can do a particular type of computation or write in a particular way is based on our cut score. So some districts, for example, in the first district I ever was superintendent on, the cut score was 20%. That would be a ridiculously low percentage to use in Oyster River because of the capability of our students. So we actually have a pretty rigorous cut score at 40%, because we're expecting our kids are going to be successful. So the MTSS team meets, and they say, okay, this, this is our math program. This is where this information comes that says our kids are struggling here. We intervene on a local level.
And that's why those other points of data are really important. We can't just use the STAR as the only, as the only point of data. You have to have other, other, and that's why the classroom teachers are so vitally important, because they're also, they also have that perspective that you're speaking of in compare, in, in that comparison for our students.
Right. So this, it doesn't make a difference in terms of, in terms of, it's still an excellent tool for identifying which students need the additional support, but there must be a different tool for us to, to understand as a whole, did we lose ground or not?
Yes.
Through the, you know, for example, through remote learning or through pandemic times.
So, so kind of dialing back a little bit to your question, is it based on standards? It is. So the STAR assessment has a set of standards that are aligned with Common Core, and the STAR has generally said it's kind of a predictor of how you might do in a, in a achievement test, a national achievement test. So within the STAR, there's several standards. If you are struggling with a standard, they will list those standards for the teacher after to say, these are the standards to address. It might be a grade-level standard, or it might be a below-grade-level standard. So if you're a sixth-grade student and you're in the 40th percentile, it'll show you the mastered standards, and it will say, these are the next standards as a teacher you should be addressing. When I think about the STAR assessment, I call it our blood pressure check assessment. So when you, everyone gets their blood pressure checked, right? And you look at, how are you doing? Well, then, students who are doing really well, we dive deeper. Students who are not doing so well, we dive deeper, and we use the other assessments that Suzanne's talking about to dive deeper. The other piece we look at is we look at individual students' growth over time. So we, STAR also calculates a growth rate. So getting back to what you said, you see, within that, if there are students who are not meeting that expected growth rate, we look into that. And a few things we look at is what, the whole-child approach. It's not just an academic look. It's also a, what's going on with this student socially, emotionally? And, you know, has there been enough attendance? Like, what are some other things that we know are going on with this student? And we dive deeper if we need to. And so this is really our universal screening, which is also required, there's a dyslexia law that requires this for K-1. So this Akadience meets that criteria, and then we extend that up using the STAR assessment to kind of keep that blood pressure check in place. It's a quick assessment. If a student takes the assessment in 10 minutes, we, we know that they didn't actually work their hardest on it, so that's another indicator. So there are standards, there are growth rates, and this level right here is just sort of the base level of looking at, on a whole, how do our students do with national norms? And the reason why Suzanne did break them out is because 25th percentile is actually the average range. If you look at a bell curve, 25th to 75th percentile is the average range. We like to look at students who are 40th and below to look at how they're achieving and making progress, to make sure they don't dip down and they're actually dipping up. So if we have students who are average, 40th percentile, and things are going well and academics are good, great. We do not say they need more, they have challenges. It means that they're learning, learning at the rate that is appropriate for them at an average rate of growth. But if they are kind of going back and forth, we want to look at that. And so that's why we start with the 40th percentile and dive deep.
But maybe this is another way of asking Michael's question. Suppose the pandemic lowered everybody. Then the 40th percentile is lower now than it was, say, two years ago. Now, how do, how do we know that isn't the case?
So it's not just one year of data. They, they look at data, usually it's three to five years, and they look at data over the course of time to make their national norm. So they don't take what happened last year and move those norms forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they can't do that, and you need at least three years so, to look, when you're starting an assessment, you need at least three years of solid data with a great enough population. great enough population to be able to make norms. And so they're using at least three to five years of data to make those norms and shift them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe just one more question. I'm just curious, it would seem to me with the discrepancy between like second grade and third grade and fourth grade, did teachers notice, it would seem to me that after with three months, or two months, whatever, been in school, teachers would say, hey, something's going on here. I mean, does it, does it match teachers' perception that second graders are, something's happened with these kids? So, you know, this is, this is different than it's been in past years.
Yes. I would say yes. In talking to David and Misty, that, yeah, that is accurate. I mean, the, the second graders were kindergartners when we went, when we left school due to COVID. So if you think about, if you think about the age and you think about the, what's happening in kindergarten, then now, now you have second graders that are, in a lot of ways, first year elementary school students. So I would say yes. And they could, they can speak to that more than I, because they're, they're in the building with their teachers every single day. But, and the information and the conversations I've had, yes, they're seeing a difference. So in continuing on, and with the middle school as well, again, we, percent proficient is staying, is staying pretty consistent with previous years. That's math. And then there's reading. And then, and then I did pull it apart again for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, so that you could see above proficient and below the Oyster River benchmark as well. And so again, what we would do with a situation like this is we would look at, look at the data and work with the MTS team, MTSS team to make determinations about, you know, what are the tiers of support that we need to be in place? How could it, what, who are the students? What are the interventions? What are the skills? And how, you know, how many students? I do want to say that there are students that are, that, you know, as Catherine mentioned, that we're, we watch so, to make sure that their growth is continuing. So they may not necessarily have interventions, but faculty is keeping an eye on them. And then we do the assessment again. So, so in January, we will have another set of STAR assessments. And that will also give us more information about students. If we have students that we're concerned about, then we are going to progress monitor them. We're going to monitor their progress. And we're going to use a variety of different ways of monitoring their progress, which we will talk a little bit more about when we talk about interventions, what that looks like, and how we monitor that progress for students. And that can be academic primarily, you know, today we're talking about academic, but we will also talk about that with social emotional learning as well. And then for the high school, the high school did not administer the STAR assessment in the fall. The determination was made to really get the kids back into school and adjust them to high school. And they would be starting the assessment this, in January. So, but we did have the PSAT, NMSQT, which is the National Merit Test. It's the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test that's given. And so it's voluntary. The juniors volunteer, they volunteer to take it. We typically have about half to three quarters of the juniors take the test. This year, as you can see, the, you know, we, the students did really well. The score for New Hampshire, in comparison, New Hampshire, the average for New Hampshire was below our total average. So the average for New Hampshire was 1,052. So that's, that is below the total average for us. So that kind of gives you that norm that you were speaking, you were asking about. It's where our students were. So we'll have more information about the high school and after they administer the STAR assessment in January. And then in the spring, we will have another set of STAR assessments. And then we will also have the PSATs and SATs as well in the spring. And one of the things that I've been talking to the high school about is administering the STAR assessment. We traditionally have not administered it for 10th grade, but we're in conversations right now about, about having the 10th grade take the assessment, or, or identifying students that may, may need to be monitored and administer the STAR assessment for the students. So as, as Catherine alluded to, we do look at other types of assessment. And MTSS teams are looking at the whole child. So we're looking at attendance, we're looking at nurse visits, we're looking at formative and summative assessments in the classroom. We're looking at any, any other types of trends in behavior or trends that we're seeing. We, we've noticed, we've had a large number of risk assessments being done at the high school. This year, larger than normal. And so that's been one of the things that's been a huge focus in transitioning kids back, is making sure that the, that kids are healthy and feelings, and feeling safe at school. So those are all things. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically about that at the next presentation, where we talk about the social emotional piece of MTSS. So we are, you know, our kids have been impacted. You know, the second grade is an example of that. We do know that they've been impacted in a variety of ways. And we'll talk a little bit more about the social emotional piece at a later date. We do have school-based MTSS teams. So every school has an MTSS team that meets regularly. At the elementary level, they meet at grade level. And the middle school, they meet at grade level. At the high school, it's more of an integrated, integrated team with multiple, just because it's not, we don't have divided grades at the high school level in the same way. So that, those teams meet regularly. They talk about targeted interventions. They talk about student needs to make sure they're, they're meeting the student needs. This morning, I went to a wonderful meeting about literacy at MoHaramet, and it was an MTSS meeting about literacy and talking about progress monitoring for students. So it's happening all the time. And so at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, additional questions you may have.
I don't have any more questions, but I have a comment. So the, I think the insights about the second grade are really important, and I'm glad that we were able to glean that. It's hard to tell if the PSAT scores for the class of 22 are related to being during the pandemic or not, since that's voluntary and,
Yeah.
you know, that's kind of self-selected. But, but this is a pretty high bar for looking down the road to the future. I'm looking to the other, to the principals over here. This is a pretty high bar for us to set, especially when you look at the fourth grade, at the eighth grade math. So, so I guess the, you've, you've set your own, your own benchmark for future. Can you see?
I understand. One of the benefits is to identify the students relative to their peers, especially ones that need additional support. I'm still struggling a bit to understand what it means that in, you know, in so many of the charts that we looked at, it was a 5% or more improvement over previous years. And so, you know, what to make of that? Is it that, you know, as I sort of went in initially thinking, because it's percentile based, it just means that the rest of the country lost more ground than we did? So our relative position went up, or the relative performance of our students went up? But if, as Catherine is saying, it's, the norms are set over a number of years, is it truly saying that more of our students are proficient, though, in so many different grades and across both topics than previously? And if so, that's really interesting, that that would be a result after the pandemic. So I, I don't know how to interpret it. And I hope, I wonder if you or now or in future meetings could help us.
Sure. I do think, we did have a more robust summer program also. So one of the things that we, we had a lot of students active over the summer, and a lot of learning continued over the summer. I don't know if that's, you know, we could, we could take some educated guesses as to why that is. That, that's one of the things that, that stuck out in my mind right away was, you know, for a lot of students, the learning continued over the summer. So.
I would also add that the, the way that we entered remote last school year was dramatically different than the, the way that we were forced into remote the previous year. And our teachers did an extraordinary job in really focusing on what's important. That was what we kept on telling them throughout. And so these are largely measures of math and, and ELA, if you will. And at the elementary level, that's where our teachers put their focus. And that was because they had to. They had two and a half hours versus, you know, six hours. And so if we were assessing art or phys ed, you know, the non-core subjects, then I'm pretty sure that our scores would be much lower, because we really sacrificed the electives in order to make sure we were focused in on the core curriculum. And so I think that it's a indicator of the successful implementation of remote learning that our teachers put their heart and soul into last year, because they really wanted to be there for the students. And that would be one of the factors I would put out there, that the remote learning model we use was robust and very focused. It wasn't scattered. And I think that made a big difference. If you didn't have a, a staff that you focused on the essentials, then predictably, your scores would be lower. And I think that, those scores that we saw this year, I just mentioned in passing to Michael, that our, our academic scores were some of the best I've ever seen in the district in 10 years. And you can see that in the samples that Suzanne gave you. But I really think it speaks to the interventions of our, our staff. Our special educators just were there every day for our kids. Our elementary people were there every day in two sessions. I, I really think that the staff really listened and focused in on, on the important parts of, of their curriculum. So I think it's an indication of, of the work that our staff did during that time period.
I do think also the MTSS team work that has, has really flourished over the last two years has, has been quite remarkable. I mean, I think that having the tiers of support, the professional development for, for teachers, and having the interventionists that it has made an enormous difference as well. And we can talk a little bit more about that when we talk about the interventions. But I do think that those tiers of support are really important, they're very important for students and for teachers.
I also say that the scores could, you know, lull us into a feeling of, you know, success. And they are very good scores. But we also, the whole point behind doing all the assessment we're doing is to find out where the children are in turn, who are the struggling youngsters. Because Oyster River has this atmosphere of, you know, kind of an overarching umbrella of success. And within that success, there are children who are not being successful. And that's why we've been developing this MTSS program. And, you know, that the teachers have bought into it so totally and really look at the success of each child in relation to their experiences as teachers also, you know, really makes a difference. And your support of the extra tutors in next year's budget only enhances that at the middle school and high school. And we, we have to remember that there's about 15% of the kids who don't qualify for special education and who aren't achieving at high levels. And that's really the group of kids that MTSS is all about. So we'll talk more about that at the next meeting. But we use this data with fidelity. We, we're pulling it apart, talking about who's, what child needs more. We're basing it on not just the STAR assessment, but classroom observation. So, you know, the question about teachers, Tom asked about teachers, is this resonating with teachers? It absolutely is.
Yeah.
Talk to teachers across the district. And one of the things they'll tell you straight out is that the beginning of this school year was, is, has been really hard for staff and students in terms of helping youngsters get back into the focus on, of daily school life. And, you know, the, the, the issues that Suzanne referred to in terms of referrals, risk assessments, that's indication of, you know, stress level from the pandemic that we're trying to take on head, head on. So one of the, one of the most wonderful things about this is it says, okay, you've got the academic piece going in, in the right direction, which allows us as a district to focus on the SEL piece, which is a place where we've all been concerned in terms of the pandemic. So that, that would be my observations, Lucy.
Tom? Just a question about the state assessment. Is your sense that the state assessment is really not valuable for us to, to learn anything?
I will say it's not valuable. I'll save her from saying it, because Suzanne would be hard pressed to say that, that directly. The state assessment has changed three times in my time here as superintendent. The STAR assessment that we've been using, we've been using consistently since the second year I've been superintendent. So being able to count on the data and have it be reliable is critically important. It feels like every time a legislature or a governor comes in, they decide it's time to change the state assessment. So we're really just doing the state assessment because we're required to. This is the real work. This is telling us how our kids are doing. And so that would be my response to that, Tom. It's, it's politically driven as opposed to educationally delivered.
SATs are
That's a state.
Other than SATs.
So that's a different, even though it is a state assessment, it's a college board test.
We actually advocated for the SAT to come to state assessment,
Yeah.
because our kids were at the high school and just blowing off the state assessment.
Yeah.
On the other end, the students who are 90, 95%, I think there's, there may be a sense that the school is, the schools are so much focused on recovering from the pandemic for the wide number of kids around SEL or around those that are in the, in the, in the lowest quartile or sort of trying to remediate in that way. Do we ever pull out the data for that highest level? And how are they being sort of extra challenged if they are not, extra challenged at this time when a lot of the focus is on the remediation in SEL?
So absolutely. I mean, one of the things that the, that the, doing universal testing like this also allows us to see, to identify kids that maybe need additional challenges. And a lot of that's done in the classroom with the teachers. And you can see it through reading, you know, talking about increase the difficulty of reading, working on different skills within the class. We have different programs within the math, like at the middle school, there's different ways that kids are sort of pushing through and, and challenging themselves with their skills with math. And again, those are the interventionists. You know, we can have, as well as the classroom teachers. So, you know, when we look at interventions, it's, it's for students that may have certain specific areas of challenge, but also to challenge students that, in different ways. And that can include, that can include pushing kids beyond sort of grade level norms. Definitely. But you see that in the, you know, in a variety of different ways within the school building and within the classrooms.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Morse, anything else?
No, Michael.
Can I just comment briefly on the communication survey? So we've received back the preliminary report from the UNH Survey Center. We are tentatively going to ask Dr. Smith to join us in January to talk through that. Big thanks to parents and staff who participated in that survey already. There are 44 pages of comments that we've, we've received and starting to work through. So.
Yeah. And Andy is willing to come in on January 5th.
Great. All right. Business administrator?
Good evening. Just giving you another update on the current year budget, the status of all the accounts, where we stand as of December 7th. Questions?
Just to make sure I understand your note at the bottom. So the, the district operating expenses shows a balance of 1.49 million right now? And that is inclusive of the 673,000 from Health Trust?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's why that, why the balance remaining is so large?
Yes. Correct. Everything looks good at this point. And I do go back and look at previous years, and I'm actually going back two years. But still, this year is a little different than all the others. And no concerns are really on my part. So all good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Olivia, the student representative report.
Good evening. I was just going to talk a little bit about some of the things that Ms. Noe went over, but go a little bit more in depth in it. So I had the opportunity to get to help out with the coding and COCO event that happened a Wednesday back. And it was during our flex and advisories. And we, the NHS helped volunteer to livestream some of like the robotics things that were going on. Got to walk around, show like the younger kids the robots and stuff like that. It was super well done. I got, I was able to take some pictures for the event. So I think Ms. Noe has some of those. I have an album, if any of you guys are interested in seeing more of it. But it was overall really well, really well put together. And I thought it went really good. And then also on that Wednesday, there was another round of Barrington tours for the middle school parents and middle school parents and families who would be interested in attending Oyster River. I also got to speak at that, which was really nice. I got to share my experience with ORHS and why I ultimately chose to come here and why I love it here. And then there was tours afterwards to show them around the high school and stuff, which was cool. That one was also, you were able to attend it remotely too, which was different than the first time that we were able to run it. So there are some people who were able to hear the whole spiel remotely, which was fun. Salt and like the senior class government is helping create the like Winter Fest activities for next week, which is kind of similar to like pep rally week, spirit week type thing, where we have different activities planned for that, is it Wednesday? The Wednesday before break or whatever. And so you'll be, it's like a half-day, like the sped-up bobcat day, basically. And then afterwards, you'll have, you go with your advisories. A Microsoft form was sent out that you could sign up for different events that are going on. Like I know there's like a cookie decorating, there's like you can watch a volleyball game that's going on. There's like snow shoeing if we have snow, that type of thing. And then other activities, obviously, depending on that.
Could just be a walk in the field.
Yeah, yeah. So advisories were able to choose which events they would like to go to, and you'll kind of travel with them and get to go do some fun festival things, I guess. And then there's also kind of like, not necessarily dress-up days, but like day like you can if you want type thing. And so on Monday, it's like bundle-up day, so you wear your layers, you know, do that. And then Tuesday is like winter hat and sweater day. So like if you have a really favorite knit hat with a pom-pom or something like that, you could wear that, you know, fun sweater, something like that. And then Wednesday is pajama day, I believe. And then today, I actually, Ms. Noe kind of talked about it a little bit, but sociology class had a discussion with some administration and some school board members and, yeah, and a few teachers, I believe. And I was lucky enough to actually be in that class. So I thought that overall, thank you to everybody who was able to come. I thought it was very well-done. I loved getting to talk with everybody and share some ideas, and I know that all my peers did too. The opportunity was really great, and I want to thank Mr. McGrath for setting it up and like being able to have all these people come. I thought that that was very well put together also. And it was nice to be able to get to ask administrators and board members questions and have them ask us questions. And it was small groups, so it was nice and like concentrated, and I thought it was really well-done. And then the Spring Musical just had tryouts, and they completed, and the cast list is out. I believe it's on Ms. Stetson's door, but yeah. And then there's a door decorating contest, and I believe the judging for that is on Wednesday during advisory. And my advisory happens to be the one that gets to judge them, coincidentally. And then Senate is still running their food drive for N68 Hours of Hunger, so bring in canned goods or non-perishables. And you can just look around in your teacher's room, they probably will have a box, or you can just ask them, and they might know where you can find a box to drop it off. You can probably drop it off in your advisory too, if you want. And then the NHS fundraiser drawing for who wins the prizes or whatever is tomorrow, and the money gets donated to the Seegos Cancer Center. So, yeah. If you guys have any questions, that was a lot.
That's amazing.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
What is the Spring Musical?
So the Spring Musical, I'm not 100% on the name of it, but I know that it's like the peanuts, like Snoopy, then Charlie Brown, that type of thing. I don't know. I believe Allison's in it, right?
Yeah, Charlie Brown.
Charlie Brown, yeah. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I assume there's no finance committee report?
Nothing.
All right. That brings us to unanimous consent. Is there anything that anybody would like to discuss separately?
I'd just like to, just to remain consistent with my pattern of voting, I'd just like to pull the coaching nomination.
All right. Anything else? All right. With that, I will move approval of unanimous consent agenda, including approval of Oyster River Middle School maternity leave of absence from March 2021, I think that should be March 2022 through the end of the school year, to approve the Oyster River Middle School activity stipend for jazz band and for second read and adoption of policies BHE, school board use of emails, IB, academic freedom, and GBI, staff participation in political activities.
I'll second.
We have a second from Denise. All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The unanimous consent agenda is approved. And so we'll now take up the high school winter coach nomination for diving.
I'll make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School winter coach nomination for diving.
We have a motion from Denise. Second from Tom. Any discussion? Refer back to previous discussion. All those in favor? We have five in favor and student rep in favor opposed, and abstentions? No abstentions. In our discussion items, the first one is the school calendar 2022-2023 school year.
Yeah.
Too many twenties in there.
So this has been one of the most frustrating years to try to develop the school calendar. You know, our goal is not to disrupt the education of students. And unfortunately, in conversations with Rochester, Summersworth, and Dover, they've chosen a non-traditional week to place their February vacation. And, you know, that impacts our CTE kids. And, you know, as far as a number goes, it's about 70 kids in total this year. Predictably, it would be someplace in that area again next year. And so if we put the February vacation where we wanted it initially, which is the 27th through the 3rd, it has a direct impact on potentially 70-plus or minus students in the upcoming school year. And if we follow Rochester, Summersworth, and Dover's CTE centers, then we end up with a lot of community unrest because this is like the most unpopular week on the planet, it feels like, in terms of having our Oyster River winter break. Michael asked me if I would reach out to see if they would reconsider. I did. Obviously, they didn't. Rochester has a lot of residents who work for them from Maine, and Summersworth has a lot of connections to Maine as well. The superintendent in Rochester said that this is one of two years, last year being the first, where we're out of sync with the recommended calendar from the state in that they anticipate being back into the right slot next year, meaning the last week of February because it doesn't carry into March. So that's where we are on that. And then in terms of opening school, administrators really advocating for three workshop days. If we do that, then we wouldn't bring the kids back until after Labor Day, which might be actually popular. We'll see. On calendars, you can always predict that somebody's going to be happy with a decision, somebody's not going to be happy with a decision, which is why they're never my favorite thing to deal with. So, you know, ultimately, for me, it's a matter of trying to align as much as possible with the CTE centers to take care of those children so they're not, you know, cut out of their CTE work. Michael asked me if I would approach the superintendents about providing remote work, and I stopped at Rochester because he said his contract wouldn't allow him to ask his teachers to do that, provide remote work, necessarily not remote video, but remote work that would keep them abreast of what's going on. So that's where we are, Michael, and I gave it the college try, but didn't get very far.
Are you looking for, so you're still working on this?
I'm still working on this.
Okay, so this is not, you're not looking for a vote on the person?
I just want to let you guys know where we are. And, you know, I think we do need to make a decision, you know, in January, but, and I'm still working through this. So I guess what I would look for is feedback from the body.
Denise?
A separate issue that I'm just gonna mention really quickly. I had mentioned last time about the idea of potentially looking to have a day for each, you know, different religions such as the Hindu and the Muslim and the Jewish. And what I thought it over, and to me, what makes the most sense, I think that's still something that is worth looking into, but where we have approved a DEIJ position, it seems like it would possibly be a good idea for possibly that person to look into it and to kind of investigate more if there was a way to do that. So I have kind of given that idea up for this calendar year with the idea of perhaps taking a look at that for another year. So I just wanted to get that out of the way before, I know we have to talk about the February vacation week.
Yusei?
We all know there's tremendous community desire to align the February break with the rest of New Hampshire, not with Maine and Massachusetts. The conversations that you've had, thank you so much for trying, and I understand that we can't change those districts' decisions, so we need to make the choice. To me, it seems clear that 70 students come first. I wonder, though, if we should learn more about how their families feel in particular, if there's a way to reach out to their families and get a sense for what their preference is and what they would choose to do just hypothetically in those situations because perhaps it's not a correct assumption to, that those families in particular would want the CTE alignment. Perhaps they'd prefer to have their New Hampshire vacation, and so I'd be interested in that information.
So just in asking, you're asking the current-year families, because we don't know the kids who would be taking the Volk's School classes next year.
Right. And to Denise's point, there is, Yom Kippur is on October 5th. October 7th is currently listed as a teacher workshop day. I wonder if it would be possible to switch the teacher workshop day to Wednesday, the 5th. Yom Kippur is the Jewish Day of Atonement. Students miss school that day anyway. I understand that there's, that would take us out of alignment with the CTE districts. At the same time, with the teacher workshop day, there tends to be more flexibility in that day because if it's teacher conferences or not. So the CTE students would still be able to attend the CTE classes on the Wednesday and would simply attend the Oyster River on Friday. So they might not get a day off the way that their peers do, but that, to me, seems a decent trade-off so that we, if we are having a teacher workshop day, we might as well have it on a day when some students are needing to miss school anyway.
So just have to keep in mind that that increases the number of total days. It's not just a day that we're flip-flopping until we make a decision on February. If February is aligned with the CTE centers, then this calendar is not aligned with CTEs for 11 days. That is a lot of instructional time that we're sacrificing. So we just, as we think about different ideas, the calendar, we just have to keep in mind that when we make a decision, it's another day added to the non-alignment with the CTE centers.
What are the other days that are not aligned?
Well, right now, all of February. I would say that there's a debate internally as to whether the CTE centers do anything that is worthy of sending the kids in that first week. In some interpretations, there's a day there that's out of alignment, and in another interpretation, there's not a day out of alignment because the instructional practices at that point are really about orientation to the class and the building and all of that. So that one I see as a relatively harmless conflict.
Sorry, when you say the first week, you're talking about?
The Tuesday, the Wednesday, and the Thursday.
Of the?
So they have two workshop days, and we're suggesting three.
So their first day of, the first day of CTE is the day with the triangle on it on here?
Yeah. And then if that's the case, we'll be out of alignment on the last day of school, out of alignment in February, and we'll be out of alignment with two of them on January the 23rd, and we're out of alignment with two of them on November because that's Election Day. And Dover uses their schools for elections as we do. So Rochester and Summersworth wouldn't be going on. So sometimes we're out of alignment with all three of them, sometimes we're out of alignment with two of them.
For the October teacher workshop days, what are the expectations on students for those days? Why wouldn't a student who had a teacher workshop day at Oyster River on Wednesday still be able to go to their CTE classes?
Well, we could say that for February as well. The question is, will students do that? You know, they're teenagers with a group of other teenagers, and we could say, well, we could provide busing on that day, and we could provide busing in February. Then we're asking, you know, 15 and 16 and 17-year-olds to assume a responsibility that they may not be willing to assume. So I've had that conversation a number of times with Suzanne and Becker about, you know, is that a real solution or is that a paper solution? We truly wouldn't know until we try it, but my gut tells me that teenagers, being teenagers, they're going to want to hang with their peers and not be going over to the CTE center on those days. Some of them will. I don't mean to disparage anything, but they are social by definition, and they like to be with their peers. And if everybody's going on vacation, they want to be on vacation with their peers.
That makes sense for February. I'm not sure about the middle of the week for a day. We'll see.
Tom?
So Jim, are you saying that this year, to be aligned with Rochester and Dover and the CT, we'd have to have this week to be in alignment? But next year, they're thinking about the week after? So this is like a one-year, and then we'll be in alignment the next year?
Yeah, exactly, Tom. So my conversation with the superintendent in Rochester is that this non-alignment happens two times out of every 10 years. In eight years, we automatically are aligned. So what they didn't want to do in those two years is go into March for February vacation. So this is the second of the two years.
Okay.
And according to, you know, the superintendent, the next calendar, we would automatically be aligned, and we'd be aligned for another eight years. So I, of course, didn't realize that because, you know, I started right at the point where that was out of alignment. So this is the first time I've seen us out of alignment. And of course, in the pandemic year, it was relatively immaterial. So that's why we're getting the pushback we're getting from the community because they're used to not being in the vacation with Maine and Massachusetts. They like to be out of sync, like the state's recommended calendar, to avoid that increase in vacation costs that occurs when Maine and Massachusetts take their vacations.
It's not just the vacation convenience factor, though. We have families with students in Oyster River where parents work in other districts, and so they're not aligned this year. We have staff who live in other districts and work in Oyster River, so they're not aligned this year with their children also. I don't know, what is, Olivia, do you know what Barrington's, you know, like Barrington Middle School and Elementary School, what their February break is this year? Are we misaligned with?
I think we're actually aligned with them this year. Me and Ms. Noe check that out on Monday because I asked that same question.
So it's easier for Barrington because they don't have their own high school. So they just, when their kids are going to Dover and us and Cole Brown. So I didn't mean that was an exclusive list, Michael. I think you're absolutely right. There's a lot of reasons, and I think that's why we're getting the pushback.
So if we did this, we'd be aligned with Barrington, Rochester, and Dover, right?
Summersworth.
Summersworth.
If we move the February vacation back to where we would traditionally have it, we would be out of alignment with those three schools. This February vacation that's here is aligned, but this is the controversy.
Okay.
I don't think there's been any other issue where every single piece of feedback I've received on it was negative.
Me too.
Besides this. So that gives me a lot of pause about where we put the February break.
I haven't heard a thing. I mean, nobody that I know of has written to the board in general. Perhaps they've had individual conversations, but I have not received.
Perhaps they've had individual conversations, but I have not received any letters regarding the school calendar.
Yeah, I would say that most of it has been verbal. And in my case, I haven't been undated with emails, but I've been inundated with why, 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 why?
There's a reason.
And I do explain it's about the Volk Schools. And for most people, they get that. But at the same time, they're trying to resolve their internal family conflicts related to this being an odd week.
Yeah.
So processing time is still there, but we should probably dive into this deeply and get it off the table in January so we can let our parents know, you know, because they are, they will start putting a lot of pressure on us because they want to be able to plan. So we came in early, so we have a little bit of breathing room. But I wouldn't take it past January because they're really anxious to set up their lives as well.
Do the CTE programs take that Friday before Labor Day off? Or is that one of our misalignment days? That is aligned?
That's aligned.
Like this, okay.
Yeah, that Friday and Monday is aligned.
All right, any other comments, questions for Jim? Thanks. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the ORPASS negotiated agreement. We are not ready to take this up tonight because ORPASS has not had the opportunity to ratify that yet. So we will, we will take that up in January after they've had a chance to do so. Are there any committee updates? Denise?
Policy committee met and we started to look at the, it's the JICD, which is the Student Discipline and Due Process, which is the result of state, new change in state law. So we started to look at it. We made some suggestions. It's going to come back to the committee next month before it comes to the board for first read. And there's, it's JICD and the R document that goes along with it. And JIC, which is Student Conduct.
Tom?
Last week, Monday, we had a meeting of the sabbatical committee, just an organizational meeting. So we just set up the timeline for that. I think this may have changed, but I think we only had one, right? One applicant at that, one? Is it one?
There's still time. So if there's any faculty that are hearing this, there's still time to get the, to get information in. The deadline isn't until after the vacation.
Uh huh. UC?
The DEIJ committee met this past Monday. Previously, also, one before Thanksgiving and one after Thanksgiving. The event planning committee met. The board had approved the idea of a two-part series for communities. And so the save the dates are January 13th. 6:00 to 7:30 is the first of these two events. January 26th, 6:00 to 7:30 is the second of these two events. Both of them, unfortunately, will be virtual, or we believe they will be at this point due to COVID. The first one, as we discussed, will be more roundtable style or on Microsoft Teams and breakout group style. But it'll be an opportunity for small group discussions, facilitated discussions between community members. It's sort of at a higher or community level, social level of different folks' perspectives to bridge some differences, I think, that we're seeing across society, across our community, and begin to open up respectful dialogue with folks who might have different opinions or approaches. And we'll have better and more official wording for those in the coming weeks for the announcement and promotion of it. But please begin to think of, you know, folks in your neighborhood that you might want to invite to come along. The second event on January 26th will also have a discussion component, but will be primarily, or the first part will be, the administration and teachers presenting on how some of these DEIJ concepts are currently being implemented in school and answering some of the questions that the community might have raised at the earlier discussion, as well as in other conversations that we've had.
Others? All right. That brings us to public comment. Thank you for your patience.
So all parents and taxpayers should be concerned that the DAHA position was not properly articulated. In scope, it lacked a job description, gave no indication to show how the role would be implemented into the curriculum. Frankly, the board lacked even basic rigor of what would normally occur, creating a brand-new role. Regardless of how much time and effort a committee spends on an issue, I do not find it fair to taxpayers to provide funding for a new position based on flawed reasoning. It should also be noted the position was added to the budget without unanimous consent. If the committee worked hard on it, is the new standard for adding positions, then perhaps we should review the long-range planning committee's inability to accurately predict student population over time and stop adding positions if we know the student population is shrinking. I urge the board to reconsider its affiliation with New Hampshire Listen as they are not an organization that just listens, but instead has clear intent, based on their documents and research papers that are widely published, to actually influence policy in communities in far-reaching topics far outside diversity or inclusion. In the case of Exeter, New Hampshire, they even allowed New Hampshire Listen to actually facilitate an entire meeting, which I implore the district to never do by passing the keys to the city to an outside agency. This is our town, not to be infiltrated by a foundation funded by corporations. The Carcy Institute, of which New Hampshire Listen comes from, is essentially a political influence organization that is no different than Cato, Owen, or other similar foundations. To continue to associate with New Hampshire Listens is weaponizing politics into our schools. Feedback from my own kids has been that the issues that they see most critical to the school is funding for counseling for drug, alcohol, and mental health issues. Neither of them see racism as a major systemic issue. In a recent meeting, even the board student representative asked if the GIJ coordinator would be available to talk, which is more reflective of a counseling role. I don't think that anyone really knows what the role is. It was never defined, including the board. I will be voting no on the budget and urge other parents to look deeper into the Carcy Institute and New Hampshire Listen as they go far beyond diversity and inclusion. And I think this is the point, I really want you to understand what I'm trying to get. If you want to positively influence those who are prone to bias and racist ideas using a partisan approach and simply aligning with those who simply agree and are already bought in, it might give you comfort, but you will fail to accomplish the real goal of moderating cultural illiteracy. And you may even embolden those who are resistant to that change. That's what a DAHA position will set you up for. This is the beginning of a slippery slope, and I urge the board to reverse course on that position.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Other public comment?
My name's John. I teach at the high school here. I'm a parent of two kids in the district, one of which is at the high school here, actually in the CTE program. I'm coming here, I just, to make a couple of comments as a teacher and a community member, and then a request, which was already sort of batted around here relative to the calendar. But before I get into that, you know, I just want to say I am very grateful for the work this year to get us in school, the safety protocols that are in place that are keeping us safe as a community, keeping the schools open. So thankful for that. I'm thankful for the thoughtful work that is being done around DEIJ and sustainability. Just this last week, and the role, one of the roles that I play at school with Sustainability Club, some very rich conversations between the DEIJ kids, the club there, with the Sustainability Club, just kind of coming together to think about how we can work better together and looking at the connections between social justice and sustainability. So I'm grateful for that work and the students that are really engaged there. I'm also grateful for Maggie Morrison, who has been such an important part of the sustainability effort in the district over the last few years. As the coordinator, I'm personally, I'm very sad to see her go. She's been a colleague, a friend. She's really an important friend in person to me and has really helped to sort of under, support the work that I'm doing at the high school and throughout the district, and at the middle schools as well. And I did want to come here asking for a request, which was talking about the calendar. As a, as a parent, as a community member, and actually as a parent who has a CTE kid who's loving the program, thankful for the opportunity to engage with that. She's in sports medicine, and it's exciting to see her step into her passions there. I will say for my part, I think it would be interesting to see what the other CTE parents would say about the decision to go with the calendar, with the February break. Thinking about my daughter and thinking about the fact that she's a senior and next year, you know, this is the last vacation with her, you know? And so hearing about 11 days lost, that is not insignificant for sure. But we're not alone. And to your point, Michael, earlier, there are a lot of parents who work at different districts, and it does cause division, you know, within the family structure for a lot of people. So it is about the 70 kids. One of, my kid is one of them. But it's also about family, you know, health and well-being as well. So thank you, Dr. Morse, for going to bat and thinking about it. Those are my two cents. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brownley. Anybody else? All right. You can see our future meeting dates there. Thanks to the manifest committee for making it in so that for the last check run at the end of the year. The next regular board meeting is January 5th, right here. And then January 11th is the budget hearing, which will be in the auditorium. That's a Tuesday, not a Wednesday. So the budget hearing is on January 11th, which is a Tuesday weather permitting. All right, and with that, can we have a motion adjourned? Motion from Brian? Second from UC? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. We are adjourned. So it's time's up.